We will now open the meeting for Thursday, December 15, 2016.
Gary Bowden.
Here.
Robert Kaplan.
Here.
Ryan Kennedy.
Here.
Sam Lopez.
Here.
Chad Sigmund.
Here.
Vice Mayor Malferjo.
Here.
Mayor Goings.
Here.
This evening we have our prayer and pledge by Councilmember Kaplan.
If everybody will rise, I am going to read a prayer that Frank Borman, when he was on the Apollo 8 space mission, wrote for Christmas in 1968. And I thought it was a good one for this evening. Bow your heads. Give us, O God, the vision which can see your love in the world in spite of human failure. Give us the faith to trust your goodness in spite of our ignorance and weakness. Give us the knowledge that we may continue to pray with understanding hearts. And show us what each one of us can do to set forward the coming of the day of universal peace. Amen. And you'll face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes of the regular session of December 1, 2016?
So moved. Second.
If there are no objections, motion carries.
Approval of the minutes of the special session of December 8, 2016?
So moved. Second.
If there are no objections, motion carries.
Petitions, communications, and public hearings. I don't believe we have any petitions this evening. City managers report an update?
Senator, general updates. The West Pike Street and at the North Florence Street intersection radius improvements. Green River, the contractor, has completed that project for the radius improvement as of Tuesday, December 13th. There's some minor check things that they have to go back to approval on, but for all intents and purposes, the project's been completed. The Second Street, Lounts Hill, Van Buren Street improvement project, Bear Contracting has completed the roadway. It was reopened to traffic as of 7:30 this morning. So I hope everybody's had the opportunity to traverse through there. It's a much-needed improvement's been completed. And I think you'll be very happy with the conditions of the roadway.
So it's totally done?
Totally done for the roadway. So there's also some landscaping and things such as that that'll finish up over the next week. For the YMCA, the HVAC replacement, a meeting was held with City Plumbing and Heating, the YMCA's director, as well as the aquatic director and Kim Karakosis with the city, to discuss the timeline for the replacement project. So it's been decided to begin the replacement project on April 10th. And this will take approximately four weeks to complete once they begin the demolition of the HVAC system that's currently on the building now. So at that point in time, most likely, the aquatic center will be out of service due to the fact the HVAC does heat not only the air, but it also heats the water in the pool. So it'll be, it'll get pretty cold up there once they start. Fairmont Avenue wall replacement project, the contractor, SW Group, from Grafton, did begin work on the replacement of approximately 150 linear feet of the concrete wall along Fairmont Avenue, beginning last week, December 5th. And the contractor is tentatively scheduled to have that completed within the next two weeks. Demolition, council did award a contract to reclaim on Thursday, November 3rd. The structures located at 206 Tuna Street, 516 South Third, and 141 East Main. Due to the recent change in state code that requires us to go back to Circuit Court, pretty much for their blessing, if a property owner does not agree to the demolition, even though they've gone through the entire appeal process, we still must do so. So that actually changes the low quote that was awarded. So therefore, I went ahead and signed off on the change, to change it to Empire Builders. And that dollar amount will be $16,850 to raise the structures of 206 Tuna Street and 516 South Third Street. So they'll begin the demolition of those two structures in January. And both of those owners have signed agreements to have those structures raised.
Excuse me, can I ask who owns 141 East Main?
141 East Main is owned by Mr. Martin Schaefer.
Thank you.
If I may?
Yes.
What kind of timeline are we looking at then on a Circuit Court case?
Well, it's a great question. This is uncharted territories. It's the new statute, so when we file that, I'm not sure how quickly that moves forward.
We're going to try to get it filed as soon as possible after the first three years. Get the suit filed, then there's obviously time to respond. We're just scheduling order, talking to the manager and council to advise about the progress of that. I mean, I don't, the hard part is with what the new regulation says, it doesn't say really what the court's supposed to decide. It just says you have to get an order. So I, it's hard to tell what the issue is.
I have a quick question. What about, what changed the price? Like what?
The actual structure of 141 East Main, when you, when you take that structure off of the contract compared to the two contractors, then Empire becomes the lower one, actually by a hundred dollars.
Okay, so in other words, because one of the three has to go to Circuit Court, and we move forward the other two by consent, that's what changed everything?
Yes. And then both, both contractors were well aware, when we began the process, that it was always based upon, A, money available, and the timeliness of the doing it. So neither contractor had an issue either way it went. So we did speak to both of them. And then the $16,850 is under the amount that I'm authorized to sign off on for contracting. So therefore, I just went ahead and did it to expedite that contract so that we can begin. Especially as Tuna is in dire need of being raised.
Well, that's very disappointing about 141 East Main Street, because that's a huge eyesore for the city. And I can't believe that we still have to look at that.
Hopefully by spring we'll continue forth. And then once that is decided by the court, then what we'll do is, at that point in time, execute a con, bring it back to council to authorize the contract. And then that contract will go to reclaim. Reclaim's the lower one on those two. So they'll then come back in, and they're willing to hold that price until that later date in the top. Under the Home Rule, the annual Home Rule progress report was submitted on a timely manner on December 1st, prior to the deadline. And again, appreciative of the team that put that together, consisting of Frank, Kim, Annette, Adam, and myself, to get that done. So again, appreciative of the staff to complete that in a timely manner. Under economic development, the Robinson Graham Performing Arts Center, the bid opening is Thursday, December 22nd at 2:00 p.m., and that'll be held in my conference room. So we do anticipate several general contractors to bid on that. And then at a later date of Thursday, January 5th of 2017, we'll bring those bids to council to authorize awarding that bid contingent upon the bond closing in mid to late January of 2017. And that way, we'll have a set price for the bond closing to move that process forward as well. The executive director position, we did receive the resumes. We began that process of the first phase of interviewing, some of the, via written questions back to them to answer. So we're moving that forward. The committee, the interview committee, will be meeting Monday, December 19th, to begin this process, taking it down the road a little bit further. So we'll have an update for you in January, where we are with that executive director search.
How many people are on the interview committee?
Ribbon Cunnings, Hooch's House Bed and Biscuits, located at 322 Broadway Avenue, Tuesday, December 20th at 12:00 noon. And then under sanitary board, the Hughes Avenue Project, which is the contractor's Green River, did begin the storm drainage and sanitary sewer modifications as of Thursday, December 8th. And the project is tentatively scheduled to begin, or to be completed by January 19th of 2017. 12th Avenue Project, sanitary board did approve a contract in the amount of approximately $200,000, contingent upon the DEP approval. This project will include an upgrade on North 12th Street from the intersection of Pearlman to Franklin Avenue. This upgrade is required for, one, the development that's going in, that's later on in the agenda for the TIFF project, but as well to separate and to take in some of the sanitary from some of the houses located on, near Pearlman and Franklin as well. The wastewater treatment plant upgrade, predominantly, the upgrade has been completed. The plant's capacity has been tested with several of the recent wet weather events that we've had recently. We've treated 13 million gallons a day. We opened the gates up, then we went to 15 million gallons a day for the first two events with no issues experienced at the plant. And this past week, we opened the gate to accept $18 million, or 18 million gallons a day, successfully accepted all the flow coming to the plant. So again, hats off to Paula Haas and his staff. Again, that's been a very long project in duration moving forward. So, you know, as this project also comes to a close, we will have a ceremony at the plant for the public, sanitary board, and council, but also be able to go down and take a tour of the plant to see what the upgrade was. The main interceptor trunk line cleaning project, the state pipe has cleaned approximately 2,300 linear feet of the seper line and has moved, removed 70 tons of debris and material from this line. And there's approximately 1,500 linear feet remaining to be cleaned per the contract. This has immensely improved the flow that's going into the plant and has reduced the amount of overflows within the line itself and the system.
Is that, I mean, 70 tons, that's a lot. I mean, how often do they do that?
This area is being cleaned. We do experience issues with, but this last year, we had another cleaning project going on, a little bit more to the north of the line, and it, it experienced a couple hundred tons that was removed. So it's just a lot of grit that gets into the lines and need, from the roadway. We have a combined sewer overflow system. So we have the sanitary going into the line, as well as the street water and runoff. So it does bring grit into the line we need to clean out. But it is costly. The Armory Road pump station, we're currently installing a natural gas emergency generator. Currently, there are no generators out there, so that's some of the preventive maintenance that sanitary board's doing. And again, I'd like to commend Public Works for bringing this forth to sanitary board to get this done. This, too, will help eliminate overflows during any type of power outages to that section of the system itself, so it doesn't overflow when that pump is not kicking on due to power outages. Then also, a new flusher truck, the board did purchase the new flusher truck, and it should be arriving December 19th. And this will allow for Public Works to better service the residential backups throughout the sanitary system. Next, please, the manager.
I have a question. I was a little slow on the draw earlier. On the Home Rule progress report?
Yes.
I presume that's submitted to the state's Home Rule Board?
Yes.
Is that something you could summarize or provide for us?
It's actually located on the website. So it's on there, under Home Rule. We put all the applications, anytime we've done amendments to it, the whole tracking of our Home Rule process is on there for complete transparency. Perfect. Thank you.
Unfinished business. To conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed adoption by the city council of the city on third reading of a note authorizing ordinance which authorizes the issuance by the city of its sales tax revenue bond anticipation notes in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $16 million for the purposes of financing cost of the design, acquisition, construction, and equipping of renovations and improvements to the Robinson Grand Theater, together with the acquisition of real and personal property, fixtures, furnishings, and equipment in connection therewith, and new or additional improvements or facilities relating thereto, and the payment of architectural and engineering services and costs for other consulting or professional services that may be necessary in connection therewith, and the payment of cost of issuance of such obligations and related costs, authorizing the execution and delivery of all documents which may be necessary in connection with the foregoing and matters relating thereto. Knownesses regarding the public hearing appeared in the expedited telegram on December 2nd and December 9th.
Okay, we will open this up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against me, do so at this time. We will close the public hearing.
To consider for adoption by the city council of the city on third reading, following a public hearing thereon, of a note authorizing ordinance which authorizes the issuance by the city of its sales tax revenue bond anticipation notes in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $16 million for the purposes of financing cost of the design, acquisition, construction, and equipping of renovations and improvements to Robinson Grand Theater, together with the acquisition of real and personal property, fixtures, furnishings, and equipment in connection therewith, and newer additional improvements or facilities thereto, and the payment of architectural and engineering costs and costs for other consulting or professional services that may be necessary in connection therewith, and the payment of cost of issuance of such obligations and related costs, authorizing the execution and delivery of all documents which may be necessary in connection with the foregoing and matters relating thereto.
So discussion for the same reasons I voted on, I can say on first and second reading, I'll vote against my third reading.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Gary Bowden?
Aye.
Robert Kaplan?
Aye.
Ryan Kennedy?
No.
Sam Lopez?
Aye.
Chad Sigmund?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Malferjo?
Aye.
Mayor Goings?
Aye.
New business, consideration of first reading of an ordinance of the city of Clarksville repealing and reenacting Article 729.04 of Part 7 of the Codified Ordinances of the city of Clarksville to add definitions thereto and update the license fees and bond requirements for hucksters, hawkers, peddlers, and canvassers.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Consideration of first reading of an ordinance of the city of Clarksville amending Articles of 1712.01 and 1712.04 entitled Adoption of State Code and Supplemental Regulations to Reflect Amendments to the State Building Code.
So moved. Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Consideration of first reading of an ordinance of the council of the city of Clarksville adopting Article 1712.05 of Part 17 in the Codified Ordinances of the city of Clarksville Property Maintenance Standards.
So moved. Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
To consider and act upon a proposed resolution regarding the setting of a public hearing date with respect to the proposed creation of a new tax increment financing district in the city of Clarksville to be called City of Clarksville Development District Number Two, the TIFF District, and public infrastructure projects and improvements within the TIFF District. The TIFF project has set forth in the tax increment financing application, the TIFF application, for the TIFF district submitted by MCP Real Estate Holdings LLC.
I'll make the motion. Second.
All in favor?
Discussion, please.
Discussion.
Just a question, because I'm getting a little ahead of myself, obviously, but do any, if this is all approved and we go forward with this, do funds from each TIFF district have to be accounted for separately? These are not commingled with TIFF districts that already exist, correct?
No, and that's a good question to clarify. We have, our current TIFF district is our funds. This TIFF district that we're approving will then become a TIFF district of MCP. And then now reverse them for their expenditures going forward for their infrastructure.
Yeah, okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
To consider for approval a bank term sheet for the purchase by MVB Bank, Inc. of the city's sales tax revenue bond anticipation notes for the financing of the Robinson Grand Theater project and the payment of cost of issuance of such notes and related costs, the award of the purchase of the notes by MVB Bank pursuant to the terms set forth in the term sheet, and authorizing the execution and delivery of such bank term sheet by the city manager of the city.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. For same reason, I voted against the one other vote tonight on the bond issue, I'm voting against this one for the same reason.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Gary Bowden?
Aye.
Robert Kaplan?
Aye.
Ryan Kennedy?
No.
Sam Lopez?
Aye.
Chad Sigmund?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Malferjo?
Aye.
Mayor Goings?
Aye.
Consideration of a resolution of the council of the city of Clarksville, West Virginia, extending and modifying the employment agreement by and between the city of Clarksville and Martin House, city manager of the city of Clarksville.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. My objection to this goes to the timing. The current contract expires in 2018, and I think that that would have been a more appropriate time to address the city manager's contract, however, I understand the majority of the council feels differently. And I'm just stating my objection to the ground.
Any further discussion?
Well, Madam, I'd like to respond to that, because in the contract, it said that we were supposed to do an evaluation of the city manager in June. And sad to say, this council is really, you know, we, we didn't live up to our part of the, part of the contract. And I'm, you know, I just think that, that when you have a responsibility, that you, you live up to your responsibility.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Gary Bowden?
Aye.
Robert Kaplan?
Aye.
Ryan Kennedy?
No.
Sam Lopez?
Aye.
Chad Sigmund?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Malferjo?
Aye.
Mayor Goings?
Aye.
Consideration of appointment to the Harrison County Development Authority?
I'll make the motion that we appoint Annette Wright to this position.
A second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Counsel comments?
First of all, thank you for wanting to assert another term. So we appreciate your commitment to the Harrison County Development Authority. First and foremost, I want to thank members of council for coming to an agreement regarding the city manager's contract. So, you know, hats off to getting that resolved. Want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy Hanukkah.
There might be somebody else out there.
Okay, there may be others out there. And just a reminder that the city's employee Christmas party is tomorrow evening at 6:00 at St. James in the gymnasium. So hopefully, we see everybody there. And I want to take this opportunity to thank the members of council that contributed above and beyond for gifts that we're going to give away to the children tomorrow night in the drawing. So thank you guys for that. Jim, you have a comment?
Yeah, I got quite a few things. First of all, I think congratulations goes out to Cheryl Ormano for her service to the community. She's been a great public servant. Also, if you haven't had a chance to go over Lounts Hill, it is well worth it. And the Florence Street widening, it looks really nice. They did a really good job. I also want to say, this is Frank Ferrari's last meeting. I want to thank Frank for his many years of service. Congratulations, and you've been, you've been a great public servant. Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy Hanukkah to our Jewish friends. And the last thing I want to talk about is, there's a scam going on in, in the city of Clarksville, Rob Short's going on statewide, but my family was affected by it the other day. And my mother-in-law got scammed out of $3,000. You know, I would advise, you know, telling your parents and your grandparents and whomever that, you know, they need to beware of what's going on. I mean, these guys are very convincing. They're relentless. And, you know, they used my son as an excuse, and she immediately fell apart when they mentioned him. So, you know, I just wanted to make everybody aware that this is going on besides the other one at the gas stations where they're getting your credit card numbers. But it's called a grandparents' stand, is that correct, Jim? And, yeah, just, you know, make sure the elderly are well aware of what's going on. And that's all I have.
Jim, since you mentioned Frank, there is a reception for Frank on Thursday, the 29th, from, at the time, exactly.
Noon to 3.
Noon to 3 at the Progressive Women's Association. So we will all be there to bid you farewell.
To crow him.
I've got a couple things. First of all, I like this, Frank, appreciate all the hard work you've done for the city. One thing I never accomplished while you were there, I never got, I never got to bring a day fund down to zero. Sorry about that. Now, you don't have to worry about it. I tried to, I tried. But just thank you for all your years of service and everything. I'm going to talk about a touchy subject, but I do want it on the record that I do not support the two houses that they want to put on Pike Street for sober living. And nobody believes in sober living more than I do. My family lives it every day. But that is not a place to put 40 people in, out of a 28-day program. I wouldn't want to buy any school to start out with. That is just not, and the way the mission went about it, they went to the county, they went to the city of Bridgeport. To me, it was like they were trying to do something behind the city of Clarksville's back and sneak in and put those houses in there before we even knew what was going on. And we didn't know what was going on until they went over to the county commission. So, and my family has done a lot for the mission, my children, all of us, my dad, and I mean, and everybody that's part of our family. I'd even question what they do over there now, with their finances. It's, it's, it has disturbed me a lot, because, believe me, I would do anything. I get phone calls all the time about people being helped with their children on drugs and stuff. But it's, and I'm not really for the methadone clinic either, because that does not help people get off drugs. And I think it's all about money and not about helping out the people that are coming to these house, houses off of drug. You put people in an environment where there's love, 20 people in a three-story house, that's, that's not even compatible to do something like that. I mean, I, I mean, I'm sorry, but I just want to be on the record that I do not support those two houses being put over there on East Pike Street.
Zeke, if I could interject to you, I'd like to thank you, as well as Vice Mayor Malferjo, and I think Ryan, you were there. We attended the meeting that was hosted by Dr. Morrison at Notre Dame High School Saturday evening. And she just kind of brought us up to date as the information that was relayed to her. And we kind of updated her from the city's perspective. So it was a good meeting. There were several concerned parents there. Unfortunately, not as many as we would like to have had there, but it was a good dialogue between the school and the city, which we had not had. So I'd like to take, take this opportunity to thank everybody that attended that meeting. So it, you know, was a good means of communication between the school and the city of Clarksville. But thanks for bringing that up, Zeke.
I appreciate everybody, Merry Christmas and a Happy Hanukkah. Be careful over the holidays, because the holidays, you know, everybody's, just be safe and enjoy your families, because that's what Christmas is all about, is family time. That's all, there.
I just want to congratulate, and thanks, Annette, for deciding to stay on, and Martin, well-deserved raise. That is on council, we should have done that in, in June. So I'll make sure that for next time, we'll be on, have that for every time we're supposed to. So sorry on the delay. Just looking for all this, all positive projects that are being, that's going on. In regards to the two houses for the sober living, I don't know if how in the hospital has been approached, maybe see if there's any, something that could be done there, rather, because I know that what I've been hearing there is it would be 20 people per house with one bathroom. So it seems like the standard of living within the house. And I think parking, which I hear may be an issue with each person has to have a spot. So there's some things to be considered throughout the city. I think, and also want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, whatever you believe in.
Thank you. Ryan?
Well, I want to start out again with wishing everyone Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And it's my understanding that actually, Hanukkah will be going on the next time we have a meeting, early January. So I'll, I'll be wishing people Happy Hanukkah both then and now. The, because I, it moves around the calendar a little bit, I guess it's struggling later this year. I want to congratulate the city on doing the free downtown parking for the holidays to help with the merchants and people shopping downtown and so forth. It's a great initiative, so I congratulate our city, our city manager and his team on doing that. I've gotten a lot of positive feedback on that from both emotions and consumers. So that's a good job there. Also, tomorrow night at 7:30 at the First I Met This Church just up the road here, there's going to be a Three Tenors Christmas concert, which is the second of the four of grand performances. And so I encourage anybody who doesn't have other plans for that evening to go, because it should be a really, really magical Christmas evening with some really good music. And I would like to just throw out, and I, as my last comment, I'd like to throw out an idea to possibly be followed up on in January after the holidays pass, which is, you know, some people have mentioned the sober living houses and the controversies going on with those. with those right now, and I think it would be good, and perhaps the city could facilitate this, if there were a town hall meeting of some sort where both the people in favor of it and both people against it would be able to stand up and speak to the public and make their case, and then at least then people would, would hear what each side has to say and would make up their own line, and people would be talking at, to each other rather than at each other or past each other, and hopefully we reach a better result that way.
We actually tossed that idea at the mission when we were on the sober living tour, and I don't know that they committed one way or another, but...
To follow up on that, Madam Mayor, I got a, I met with somebody yesterday, and this gentleman is, is willing to finance the whole, the whole thing. I mean, he's willing to do hot dogs and soft drinks and water, and even if, you know, someplace has to be paid to have it, he's willing to do that, so I have, you know, I haven't had a chance to mention that to you or to the city manager.
That's all I have.
Here.
A thanks to both our downtown businesses and the West Virginia Jazz Society for hosting the recent jazz stroll. I was not available, I think this is the first one I missed, I believe, but I was not available to attend, but I've heard that our various venues were well-attended, and I mean, this is a great asset for our community that folks are willing to pull this together and bring people into our downtown. That's what all of us are working for. We want to develop all of Clarksville, but I think there's been a particular focus to our downtown, and certainly I think our head is off to those that are helping us promote activities that bring people downtown. Certainly a nod to our, and I thought Jimmy would hit it since he had a pretty big list, but our fifth-time state champion R C B cheerleaders, that's quite an accomplishment, and I guess if they did it again, would that break a state record? Do you know, Jim?
Yeah.
I think there's one other school that's done it five in a row, but congratulations certainly to the R C B cheerleaders, and I would hope we would make an effort to invite them here again and recognize them.
We will do that, yeah.
And I'm glad Ryan brought it up, it was certainly the primary thing I wanted to bring up, because, and it's relevant tonight because we finalized with our third reading this floating of sixteen million dollars for the Robinson Grand Performing Arts Center. The Grand Performances Series, one of which is the event tomorrow night with Tenoré, three Canadian tenors, was developed as a forerunner to the types of programs and entertainment that will be hosted at the Robinson Grand Performing Arts Center, and these are the types of shows that, that we and our entire community need to support if we want that new center that we have committed a lot of money to, to survive and prosper, so I would hope that you can attend. If you can't, please share it on your social media, that these gentlemen be, these are not, you know, local guys, these are three guys that travel the world and perform, and they're very talented. It's going to be a Christmas slash holiday performance, and I think very entertaining, and you pay a little money for this, but they bring it back through Clarksville when they go to Myrtle Beach this summer, so it's a fair trade-off. That's all, thanks.
Paul, last but not least?
Well, what, what comes to my mind is I want to contend, I want to commend the Sanitary Board for what they've done with their upgrades and bringing Clarksville into the future, for all the potential growth that will happen here, and that, that excites me a lot. What doesn't excite me is that Frank Ferrari is leaving us. Frank, how many years have you served the city?
Forty-one and a half years.
Forty-one and a half years, that's remarkable.
I think if you give him a round of applause.
You know, I, I, thank you, Frank. I've gotten to know you, obviously, over the past four years, and appreciate everything you've done for the city. And lastly, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Martin, would you like to say something?
Yes, I would like to publicly thank Frank for his service as well. Frank, you were serving as interim city manager when I came on board, and not only do I treat you as a friend, I believe that we've grown in a good friendship, but you became a trusted advisor, a great partnership in the finance department. You know, your values will continue on. I think you've done a tremendous job for the finance department, and you'll leave a legacy, not only in the finance department, but really throughout the City of Clarksville, all the departments, and you will not be forgotten. You're always a friend, you're always welcome back, and we appreciate all the service you provided to not only citizens of Clarksville, but to the staff and to this council and previous councils that you served for the last forty-one and a half years, so greatly appreciate it, and we look forward to your event on the twenty-ninth, and hopefully many more after, so thank you for your service.
Bravo. Motion, we adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.